I'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. There's two flags. I don't know.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it should stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If you must evacuate this room because of an emergency, please use the west exit doors, walk quickly to the safety stations, the football and/or west parking field. Further instructions will be given at the safety stations. I'd like to compliment the high school principal and staff on the excellent condition of the school, and I'd also like to thank the high school PTA for the refreshments provided for executive session. The Board of Education accepts the minutes of the Board of Education meetings held on May 11th and May 17th, 2022, as detailed in the Friday mailing. So moved. Moved by Mrs. Reed?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
So moved. The Board of Education acknowledges receipt of the treasures report for the month of April 2022, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Reed?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. I would now like to turn the meeting over to the superintendent of schools, Dr. Sherry Cammy. All right, so pardon us. We've had a little bit of a change in our agenda. The Board of Education approves the Personnel Actions Report dated June 8th, 2022, as amended and detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Reed? Seconded by Mrs. Duraska. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. I would now like to turn the meeting over to Dr. Sherry Cammy.
Good evening, everybody. Wow, that was lackluster, but okay. So before we get on to the, what is really one of the most beautiful evenings of our school year, I just want to report to our board and the community some of the latest good news coming out of Baldwin. The first is that our Brookside School has been named a National School of Character, and we are very proud of Brookside. Last year, we started a project called Hello Neighbor. And if you Google Hello Neighbor, you'll see the origin of where it came from. Last year, we did Hello Neighbor at Brookside, and this year, we brought Hello Neighbor to Steel School. If you have an opportunity to go to Steel School, you don't have to go inside, right around the fence, you will see all of the beautiful hangings, the posters of our young second graders who were photographed by our high school AP photo students and asked the question, "So what are your hopes and dreams for the future?" And as a result, these beautiful posters were done on vinyl. They are hanging around the perimeter of the school on the fencing. I will tell you, it's absolutely stunning and beautiful, and our kids are adorable. I will say that I am ready for a post-pandemic year when their hopes and dreams do not include the environment, health concerns, and those types of things. But it really, the kids are adorable. It is like having a museum right in the middle of Baldwin. So if you have an opportunity, I highly recommend it. It was, it was just an absolute pleasure to see everybody at the Memorial Day Parade, contrary to what some adults like to say online. We did have our high school band, our middle school band. We did have our elementary students walking with their families, and our hope is that going into next year, it is just back to a regular, normal year, and we'll have full participation of everyone. Last two things, we had In Recognition of Excellence this past month, and what a night that was, to have our, our high school seniors recognize three faculty or staff members, a middle school, high school, elementary, middle school, high school, teacher or faculty member who has influenced them in a positive way. It is just an absolutely spectacular night, all on our website. And last but not least, we had our Nassau County superintendents. We have a yearly breakfast for our valedictorians and salutatorians. It was back in person this year, which was lovely, and we had Peyton Lotus, who is our valedictorian, going to Yale. And Jasmine Bish, who is our salutatorian, going to the CUNY School of Medicine. So we are very proud of them. Tonight, we have two, two special presentations. One is the recognition of our retirees, and the second is our recognition of tenure. And so it's an interesting night because it's both ends, right, of the, of the sandwich. And it is, it is exciting and lovely and bittersweet all at the same time. So if you didn't bring tissues, I highly recommend you go to the bathroom right now and pick up some tissues. So for the retirees, I would like to ask Mrs. Coles, who will be calling the retiree and the person who is recognizing them. And we have a Baldwin tradition of reading their wherewithal.
Mrs. Coles, up to the podium?
Yeah.
Okay, can everybody hear me? I'm standing on my tiptoes. Okay, I would like to begin by calling up Ms. Shirley James and Dr. James Robinson.
I'm James Robinson, not Shirley James.
If you cross everybody from here to there, you can be Shirley James. RSVP that she was coming, but maybe something happened last minute. So why don't you skip, and if she comes, we'll go back to her.
Okay, can I please have Jean Nocera and Yuno Karakis come up, please? Whereas, Jean Nocera has been an exceptional, dedicated senior stenographer for 16 years at Brookside Elementary School in the Baldwin School District. And whereas, Mrs. Nocero worked in the corporate world for 20 years prior to coming to the Baldwin School District. And whereas, Mrs. Nocero provided every staff member at Brookside School with support, encouragement, love, and guidance beyond her role, and put others first before herself. And whereas, Mrs. Nocero went above and beyond in creating a warm and inviting environment for students, getting students ready for the pledge before the pledge began, and even becoming editor of the Brookside newspaper that students launched showcasing her love for the students at Brookside School. And whereas, Mrs. Nocero assisted the principal in all day-to-day functions, maintained clear and constant communication, planned for coverages, served as a successful liaison between the principal and staff, conducted inventory of technology, especially during the pandemic, and was appreciated by her principals for her incredible work. And whereas, Mrs. Nocero was a member of the site-based team and mentoring club while also serving to support the parent university and interview committees in the Baldwin School District. And whereas, Mrs. Nocero ensured that all student and personnel records were up to date, registration of new students were completed in a timely manner, and payroll was completed. And whereas, Mrs. Nocero was the corresponding secretary for BESA and is loved and respected by members in her unit while making lifelong friends. And whereas, Mrs. Nocero served as PTA liaison and was extremely kind and supportive of all families in the Brookside community, answering every phone call with kindness, compassion, making sure, geez, it's even continued, that all new families felt welcome and existing families' needs were always met. The Board of Education and District Administration will truly miss Mrs. Nocero's dedication and passion in doing her job with excellence, while wishing her a well-deserved retirement, full of quality time with her husband Chris, her mother Jean, her children Jennifer, Caitlin, and Christopher, and the rest of her family and friends. Okay, can I please ask Ellen Quackenbush and Mr. Ed Ramirez up to the podium? Whereas, Ellen Quackenbush has been part of the Baldwin School community since 2004 and has served as a school nurse at Lenox Elementary and Schubert Elementary. And whereas, she has provided medical care and nurtured students and staff with compassion and professionalism for 18 years at Lenox Elementary and Schubert Elementary. And whereas, she has worked collaboratively with her colleagues to make sure the Baldwin Schools remained at the forefront of healthcare and stayed aligned with the ever-growing demands from the New York State Education Department as well as the Department of Health. And that's no easy job. And whereas, Mrs. Ellen Quackenbush developed a reputation as a knowledgeable, calm, loving, caring, sincere nurse practitioner. The Board of Education and the District Administration wish to express their gratitude for her years of dedicated service and wish her a happy and healthy retirement with her husband and beautiful family. I'd like to invite Allison Walper and Mr. Ramirez again up to the podium. Whereas, Allison Walper has been a part of the Baldwin School community since 2001 and has served the students at the Baldwin Union Free School District as a physical education teacher and coach. And whereas, she has provided students with instruction that was innovative and fun while molding students and instilling lifelong habits. And whereas, she has worked collaboratively with her colleagues to make sure that the Baldwin Schools remained at the forefront and stayed aligned with the ever-growing demands of New York State Education Department. And whereas, Ms. Walper developed a reputation as a knowledgeable, calm, loving, caring, sincere educator. The Board of Education and the District Administration wish to express their gratitude for her years of dedicated service and wish her a happy and healthy retirement as she enjoys being there for her son Nate. I would now like to invite Deborah Dollard and Mrs. Chalme to the podium. Okay, we ready? Whereas, Deborah Dollard has served the Baldwin learning community with dedication, grace, and excellence for 36 years as an elementary, as an elementary physical education teacher, as well as classroom teacher in the Baldwin School District assigned to Plaza and Meadow School. And whereas, Ms. Dollard is an exemplary educator who utilized differentiated instruction, cooperative learning groups, and hands-on learning activities to improve the cognitive abilities of students. And whereas, Ms. Dollard saw great value in participating in wheelchair basketball games, Field Day, Adaptive Physical Education Field Day for our ungraded classes, awards program coordinator, PTA Founder's Day, PARP slumber parties, and countless PTA and school-based events. And whereas, Ms. Dollard put her heart and soul into being an advisor for Sports Night, coach for girls' and boys' varsity gymnastics, coach for boys' varsity tennis, and middle school soccer. And whereas, Ms. Dollard's personal file is filled with letters of thanks from parents and letters of commendation from administrators for her dedicated service, applauding her exemplary contributions to Meadow School. And whereas, Ms. Dollard has received numerous accolades for her involvement in the PTA, being recognized for excellence in education as a recipient of the PTA Honorary Life Award, also being honored by Daniel Boyas, Caitlin Airy, and David Zuckerman at the In Recognition of Excellence reception. The Board of Education and District Administration congratulate her for all she has done for our students and school and wish her the best as she embarks on this new and exciting chapter in her life.
I just wanted to say a few words since you saw how thick my folder was, or not, so I heard. But this was my letter to Dr. Gallo for retirement, and it says, "It has been an honor to serve in the district where my late mom resided and attended Steel and the Baldwin High School." And she knew Mr. Carroll and went to school with Mr. Carroll, and I used to bring her to the retiree parties at the church on...
Yeah.
So, "I began my teaching career as a physical education teacher and coach. I accessed, I was accessed and began teaching in the classroom as a fourth-grade teacher. I have grown as an educator and have encountered many incredible students and parents in the Baldwin community. Over the years, I've had the opportunity to work collaboratively with my fourth-grade team and develop rich and meaningful relationships. It has been extremely rewarding, rewarding to work with staff members, principals, and administrators throughout my tenure in Baldwin. It is with a very heavy heart that I'm leaving my Meadow family that has supported me in times of great joy and sadness. I am forever grateful. Thank you for investing, investing in me to educate young minds." Thank you.
You don't have to, right? Unless they're still... Yes. Yes. Thank you very much. Okay, I would like to invite Joanne Durney and Ashelme to the podium, please. Whereas, Joanne Durney has served the students with dedication, compassion, grace, and excellence for 18 years as a teacher in the Baldwin School District, assigned to Plaza School for 11 years, Brookside for one year, and Meadow School for six years. And whereas, she utilized a variety of instructional strategies to improve the cognitive abilities of students and develop their reading skills as well as a love of literature. And whereas, Ms. Durney used a variety of instructional strategies to develop students' mathematical language skills as well as appropriately facilitated classroom discourse to support vocabulary math concepts. And whereas, in the middle of the pandemic, she successfully pivoted to remote learning with patience, creativity, flexibility, and demonstrated excellent skills in planning, instruction, and assessing her students. And whereas, as a kindergarten teacher, she put her heart and soul into teaching her students, demonstrating her ability to multitask, tying shoelaces, wiping away tears and runny noses, and a hug whenever necessary. And whereas, she actively involved parents in the life of her classroom and was an active member of the PTA. The Board of Education and District Administration congratulate her for all she has done for our students and school district and wish her the best on her retirement and many years of joy, laughter, and love with her husband Mike, children Ryan, Megan, and her son-in-law Jeff.
Thank you, everyone. I just wanted to say, I've been in several schools in the district, and at the heart of every school is family. So it doesn't matter what school you teach in, but the people that you work with are your family. They hold you up in good times and in bad. And the children that you have in your class every year are your family. And in June, we say goodbye to those little ones and send them off to the next teacher who's going to take them and make them part of their family. So thank you for everything, for my time at Baldwin.
Okay, I would like to invite Lisa Tram and Ashelme to the podium. Whereas, Lisa Tram has been a model and devoted educator, serving over 31 years as an elementary teacher in the Baldwin School District, assigned to Meadow School as a second-grade teacher, third-grade teacher, and fifth-grade teacher. And whereas, Mrs. Tram is a hard-working educator, spending countless hours in her classroom preparing lessons that inspire learning both inside and outside of the classroom. And whereas, Mrs. Tram dedicated her life to creating a warm, nurturing, and inclusive learning environment in which all students are motivated to learn and displayed an infectious enthusiasm for technology and mathematics. And whereas, Mrs. Tram utilized a variety of instructional strategies to improve the cognitive abilities of her students. Her lessons on ethos, pathos, and logos have enabled her students to develop the powerful skill of engaging in oral arguments. And whereas, Mrs. Tram has participated in numerous district-level committees, including the Science Textbook Committee and the Social Studies Articulation Committee. She values the homeschool partnership and has attended numerous school events, including Founder's Day, PARP slumber parties, and PTA meetings, and has been recognized by the PTA for excellence in education as recipient of the PTA Honorary Life Award. And whereas, Mrs. Tram put her heart and soul into teaching, has maintained a wonderful rapport with her students, and has been recognized by her students on numerous occasions at the In Recognition of Excellence reception. And whereas, her colleagues at Meadow School hope that she is able to spend her retirement doing what she loves, playing Mahjong, golf, and joining more book clubs, as well as spending quality time with her children Zach and Alex and her loving husband, Stephen. Okay. We're sorry, Stephen. The Board of Education and the District Administration congratulate her for all she has done for our learning community and wish her a long, happy, and fulfilling retirement.
As my colleague Enza said, give me a microphone. I love it. So I'm gonna just say a few words. Since my bus ride here on my 35, 36 years ago, I fell in love with Baldwin. And what I have to really say is I've enjoyed the children immensely. I've had wonderful administrators. Michelle, I really would have to say it's been wonderful. But, and the children have been fun, really fun, and I've enjoyed them so very much. But I have to say my colleagues have made me stay longer than I was going to because they are wonderful people. Every day I come in and either they're fixing something on me, they're telling me I left something. They've always been terrific to me. And my husband, because of the hours, often thinks I work night job. And I have to say that Baldwin has been special, but it's really my colleagues and the children and the parents have made it such a ride. So I'm getting off, last bus stop. Thank you, everybody.
I would like to now invite Christina Connell and Nicole Hun to the podium. Tina Connell began her educational journey as a student observer at Steel School while completing her coursework from Adelphi University in 1985. And whereas, she then student-taught at Meadow School and served as a teacher's assistant before beginning as a first-year teacher, teaching fourth grade at Steel School in 1986. And whereas, Mrs. Tina Connell has invested 28 years working with children as a second-grade teacher in addition to teaching third, fourth, and fifth grade at Steel School. And whereas, she has served in numerous roles as an educator over the years, including countless hours working as an active member of the Baldwin Teachers Association, supporting children in various clubs such as the Steel School Newspaper Club, and demonstrating unwavering loyalty to her Steel School family each day. And whereas, Tina has been a dedicated and committed educator, spending 36 years working with children, families, and all community members in the Baldwin School District, and will be greatly missed. The Board of Education and District Administration express their sincerest gratitude and thanks for the many years of service to children and to the Baldwin community, and wish Mrs. Connell a happy, healthy, and joyous... and wish Mrs. Connell a happy, healthy, and joyous retirement.
So thanks, Deb. Now I have to speak too. So I'm just going to say, short and sweet, everything that my colleague said, I completely agree with. Baldwin is a very, very special place. And I have been honored to be here since student teaching, since being an observer, for all my years at Steele. And Steele is a very special place. We are filled with the most wonderful teachers, the most wonderful children, and the best parents. And I will miss everybody very much. Thank you.
I would like to now invite Ms. Joanne Pisani and Sharice Young up to the podium. Whereas, Joanne Pisani has served the Baldwin Union Free School District since 2016 as the Assistant Director of Pupil Services and Committee on Special Education Chairperson. And whereas, Mrs. Pisani embodies the values and policies of our district and has been able to handle all situations with grace, including growing job responsibilities over the years, bringing a sense of calm to everyone she meets, entering all challenging situations with a positive outlook and sense of humor, using her years of experience and judgment to analyze multifaceted tasks. Her wisdom and foresight have been invaluable to the Pupil Services Department over the past six years. And whereas, Joanne has attended various meetings throughout Nassau County, representing the school district as the CSE Chair and Assistant Director, working closely with clerical employees to meet the enormous demands associated with the CSE process. And whereas, Joanne has played a key role in adhering to the regulations governing the Committee on Special Education Process and Procedures, spending countless hours ensuring that individualized education programs are a reflection of each student's individual needs and abilities, ensuring that programs and services were implemented and that each staff member understood their role and responsibility in providing our students with a free and appropriate education. Also, she has worked closely with the Professional Development Committee to provide staff with meaningful and enriching training opportunities. And whereas, Joanne has made it a priority to work closely with parents as they frequently have to make life-changing decisions regarding their children's education, always approached sensitive topics with sincerity and honesty, ensuring that parents understood the CSE process, post-secondary options, successful outcomes, and possible challenges that might arise. The Board of Education and District Administration wish to express their gratitude for her years of dedicated service and wish her a happy, healthy retirement with Alan, her stepdaughter Christina, and her dog Bella in the sunshine state of Florida. We wish Joanne many years of enjoying her morning exercises, gardening, making her special Italian sauce, and reading books. Congratulations to all the retirees. We wish you the very best.
So congratulations to our retirees. Just so you know what we'll do. Our next portion is to recognize our newly-tenured staff. When we're done with that, we're gonna take a break. There's refreshments in the comments, and you're welcome to come back for the rest of the meeting if you'd like to. But just so you know what's ahead. So one of the things that's so beautiful about tonight is you get to recognize people who have spent, in some cases, many, many years in our school district, really loving our kids and becoming a family and really understanding what I think most people don't understand, which is what it means to work in a school environment. It's very different than when you work in corporate environment. The relationships that you build and the dedication that you feel to the field and to your families and to your children is something, in my opinion, you don't get anywhere else. Even if you're a healthcare worker, you see patients, they come and go. But beyond your family, you never, you don't spend as much time with anyone else than you do when you are in a school. And so the other part of our night tonight is to recognize the folks who are getting tenure. Getting tenure is not easy. It is meant to be both an opportunity for growth in your first few years of your professional career. It's also the opportunity to really figure out how the system that you're working in, how it works, and how you fit inside that system. It is one of the joys, I would say, of the work that we do, which is to identify those people that are a good match for Baldwin and nourish them throughout their years here, and then to recognize them on a night like tonight where you establish that, you know, yes, you really are good enough in so many ways to be recognized as a member of the Baldwin family. So I am going to call people up. Their direct supervisor or principal, director, will recognize you, has a few brief words to say. And then we'll move on from there. So I would like to call up Mr. Karakis and Morgan Kanerik.
I'm okay with you doing that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So you call them up, okay?
Good evening, everyone. Mrs. Morgan Kanerik is a highly qualified, exceptional educator who puts the needs of children first every single day. She has evolved into a dynamic educator who understands that the world is ever-changing. And she adjusts to those changes so quickly to make sure that our students get the very best possible. In my years as principal, I have seen Morgan grow immensely into one of the most stellar educators that I've ever met. And I am so honored to be able to celebrate this special moment with an exceptional teacher like Morgan Kanerik, who has a passion for teaching, and she will continue to touch the lives of students for the years to come. Congratulations to Morgan Kanerik.
So first, I want to say that Morgan's cousin is Kanerik, and she's Kanerik. So I apologize for that, but my kids actually grew up with her family. So I don't even want to tell you that my kids are her age. We have for all of our newly-tenured staff a book. It's called On the Art of Teaching. And it's written by Horace Mann, who is, by all accounts, the father of education. So this is for you. It's hardcover, so you can't ruin it.
I'd like to invite Monique Moss and Ashel May to the podium.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Kami. No, 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 I'm good, I'm good, I'm good. Tonight is an amazing night. Obviously, we started with these amazing presentations to our retirees, and I've had the distinct honor and pleasure to know Ms. Monique Moss Oden for the past 16 years. I had the pleasure of meeting her at Schubert School when she was a math AIS teacher. And her dynamic approach to mathematics and engaging students in discourse to really make mathematics real and tangible for students was exceptional. And then she made a decision to leave Baldwin for a moment. Clearly, that choice. We pulled her back. And it's a testament to humility and her belief in the Baldwin School District. In her return to Baldwin, there was no available vacancies at Meadow School or any of the other schools. And what we did have available was a teaching assistant position. And because of the shift that we accomplished, obviously under amazing leadership, and the wonderful programs and initiatives that were instituted in our schools, she wanted to really figure out, where are we now? And how can, well, how can I best meet the needs of supporting these amazing young learners? And eventually, there was a position. And she, I had the honor of working with the Board of Education to appoint her as a fifth-grade teacher. And she is truly an exceptional lifelong learner, but an educator that inspires and motivates her students. When she, when we pivoted to remote learning, her expertise in technology and infusing technology and instruction was so instrumental in supporting our educators at Meadow School. She is a NearPod certified educator, a Kami certified educator, a Google certified educator, and it spoke volumes to me and to your professionalism to support me during that trying time. Obviously, we had to make many adjustments. But because of your exceptional compassion and dedication to your profession, you supported all of our teachers in making sure that they were able to take your strategies and your resources and immediately implement them in their instruction, whether they were hybrid, whether they were in person. And you're far better in person. So I am truly grateful and so honored and privileged to have you as an educator at Meadow School. And I know that you'll continue to, continue to lift up our students, nurture them, make sure they provide us with their best selves. And I know that our students today celebrate you. I know they were so honored and happy for you today. And I know they're ready to receive you at school tomorrow. So thank you for all you do for our community, and I hope, wish you many, many years of success in the Baldwin School District. Congratulations. Yeah, well. I feel pressured, I can't use this folder, so I'm gonna keep. Today, we also celebrate a dynamic educator. She joined our team four years ago. Her name is Emily Bisselli. Please join us. I thought I had a winning smile, but can you see this? Her smile was the first thing I saw when she walked in for the interview. And I have to say that although I wasn't necessarily, I should say, the first day I met you, I wasn't there for the interview because I was having a baby. But I heard about you, and when I had the opportunity to join and return to Meadow School, the first thing I did was step into her classroom. And you could feel the energy. You hear the conversation. You see her passion. She's truly a lifelong learner, and over the time that I've had the opportunity to work alongside you, I've been so impressed with your dedication, your commitment, and your desire to spiral learning beyond your classroom. She has taken an instrumental role in so many facets of our building. She sees the value of multicultural experiences. As a member of our cultural awareness committee, she's been instrumental in organizing each of the performances that we have our students steward, most memorable being our Black History Month presentation, where she engaged our students in spoken word with prominent African-American poets by Maya Angelou and Langston Hughes, and giving them that voice to understand the importance of culture and literature, and representing them for who they are, and seeing them for who they are, and celebrating them for who they are is truly powerful. Not only the second-grade teacher, her talents in gifted and talented education are commendable and have provided an opportunity for our students to participate in the Future Problem Solving competition. So for those of you who don't know Future Problem Solving, a few years ago, we engaged and we took on the charge with Ms. Bisselli and Mr. Cocorelli to engage a group of fourth and fifth-grade students in tackling challenging problems that will face them in the future. And how do we go about to solve those issues today? So right now, she should be at the University of Massachusetts at Amherst, because our students will once again recognize on the national level, international level. And Mr. Cocorelli is waiting for her tomorrow morning to support our scholars. But it does just speaks volumes for her ability to make an impact on so many levels of our building. She's a lifelong learner. She's currently pursuing her doctoral program at Malloy College. And she is supporting Adelphi students at the undergraduate level. So her connections to educating not only aspiring educators, but motivating and inspiring our own students is commendable. And it's been an honor to see you transform. And I know your parents are here, Rosemarie and Robert. She is inspired by her mother, who is also an educator. And we know how much to see her daughter fly and grow, not in her shadow anymore, but living in her own light, is amazing. And we also celebrate her fiance. Congratulations, Ms. Bisselli. So Ms. Haltigan, I'm standing here and coming forward, Ms. Haltigan, I need you. That's right, I forgot.
Do you have your list and my list?
Yeah, I just have yours.
Tonight, we celebrate Ms. Haltigan. She has been a dedicated employee in Baldwin. It feels like this night is long overdue. I had the pleasure of working with her as a building substitute for many years. And then she wanted to take the leap into being a teaching assistant. And I have to say, she is highly regarded, the most requested teaching assistant in the building because of her attention to detail. You don't really have, it's not a teaching assistant. You have a teacher, a co-teacher, working by your side, who has taken the time to participate in all of the professional development opportunities that have been afforded to her, to truly take the time beyond the school day to plan collaboratively with her co-teachers, and to make sure that she's supporting all students, whether it's one-to-one direct instruction in a 15-1 class or small group instruction, providing targeted support for literacy. As an instructional leader in the building, it's wonderful to have that level of support afforded to our students, because that is really what's making our students shine and feel so comfortable and supported in our environment. So Ms. Haltigan, again, long overdue, but many congratulations. Thank you for your service.
I'd like to now invite Jacqueline Sarfati and Mark Gray to the podium.
First of all, congratulations, and thank you to all the retirees for your service and dedication and commitment to our students. And to all of those getting tenure tonight, tenure is, as Dr. Kami said, a tough process. And doing it during the pandemic is, I think you guys are like the Navy SEALs of teachers at this point. It's a privilege for me to recognize Mrs. Jacqueline Sarfati for accomplishing tenure in an elementary teacher at Plaza in the Baldwin School District. Her students and their parents now know her as Mrs. McCully. As she recently married in this past year, her husband Pat, along with her sister Melissa and mother Donna are here with us tonight. And I believe your father Leo is on virtually. Where is the camera? All right, virtually. I do apologize, as teachers can attest, if you're gonna change your last name, it takes me about a year to catch up. But I'm gonna do my best in this speech to use both, okay? Mrs. Sarfati McCully has known that she's wanted to be a teacher since the first grade. This June marks the end of her 10th year as a classroom teacher. From the first day she came to Plaza, she's been nothing less than remarkable. Not only has she brought to her classroom and students mastery-level instruction, but she's also taken over our student council, set on every district-based instructional committee, provided parent-teacher-student-led conferences, offered Yale Ruler Professional Development for colleagues, and participated in every function, and that's every function or event offered at our school. I'm not so sure she's ever been absent. No, never been absent. She's driven in every aspect of the educational experience to bring 110% to our district and our children. She sees the bright side of everything. She's quoted as saying, "As much as the pandemic has taken from us, it reminded me that I have..." it reminded me that I have the best job in the world." Of her colleagues, she has this to say. "I'm inspired by my colleagues at Plaza. The staff that I work with is packed with some of the most talented and caring teachers that I have ever met. The professionals that I work with each day prove that Baldwin is, in fact, innovative, inclusive, and involved." When I review her lesson plans, I need a cup of coffee, a half an hour, and sometimes I think a PhD in order to understand what she, her plan. It's loaded with strategies, standards, and individualized goals. She is, simply put, incredibly professional and talented. Her students love to come to school each day. She's a cherished colleague and a valuable resource to her grade level. Congratulations on reaching this well-deserved milestone. We're lucky to have you and look forward to many years of collaboration.
I'd like to now invite Nicole Rika and Nicole Hun up to the podium.
Good evening to everyone. It is a great joy to have this opportunity to share a few words on behalf of Mrs. Nicole Rika. Mrs. Rika has served as a kindergarten teacher at Steele School for the past three years. Mrs. Rika is a former student of the Baldwin School District and grew up in Baldwin. She attended Schubert, Baldwin Middle School, and Baldwin High School. Although Mrs. Rika has lived in Florida, California, and Hawaii, she ultimately made her way back home to Baldwin, where she now resides with her husband and two daughters. Mrs. Rika is a kind, compassionate, caring, and exceptionally hardworking educator who engages her students using movement, songs, and interactive learning experiences. Among many moments that have brought joy to Mrs. Rika over the years, Mrs. Rika recalls that during a math lesson one day, a student exclaimed, "This is the best day ever. This is even more fun than Fun Friday." Mrs. Rika enjoys when her students are having so much fun that they don't even realize that they are learning. When reflecting on what inspires Mrs. Rika, Mrs. Rika shares that it has been most inspiring to work alongside her former third grade teacher, Mrs. Mayonhofer, who is now a colleague. Mrs. Rika shares that Mrs. Mayonhofer was the reason that she decided that she wanted to become a teacher when she was only nine years old. Mrs. Rika shares that all of these years later, she continues to have a positive impact on her life and that she was so supportive and helpful as Mrs. Rika navigated her very first year teaching in Baldwin when she served as a kindergarten teacher at Meadow School. Mrs. Rika hopes to continue her teaching career in Baldwin, inspiring young children to develop a lifelong love of learning. Mrs. Rika has expressed that she is honored to be living her dream working with the children and families of our Baldwin community. She is joined here tonight by her husband John and daughters Kaylee and Chloe. And Aunt Cynthia and Uncle Spence are also in attendance. Congratulations to you, Mrs. Rika, on this very special accomplishment of being recognized and honored for your ongoing dedication to children, families, and the entire Baldwin community.
Okay, well, Mr. Timothy Clancy and Dr. Neil Testa, please join us.
Good evening. So if you ever worked or even visited our counseling office, you would know just how busy and hectic it can get. Counselors deal with pretty much everything that comes up in a school, from academics to behaviors to social situations, and even family and personal matters. Mr. Clancy has handled it all with professionalism, care, and teamwork. After six years at St. Anthony's High School, we are lucky to have found him, and he made an immediate impact on the department and our school. Mr. Clancy attributes his success to knowing that he can always count on someone else in our office for support, many which are here tonight, because they are all experiencing the same thing, creating a close bond as a department. Mr. Clancy is committed to his professional responsibilities, and he also demonstrates the same care and commitment on the lacrosse field as the boys varsity coach. He feels that being a coach has made him a better counselor, and being a counselor has made him a better coach. That is certainly true. What most inspired him throughout the years has been his students, the way they persevered through the pandemic, virtual learning, and a variety of challenges that were unique to high school students. They came out the other side stronger, knowing that they can handle anything life throws at them. Mr. Clancy relishes those moments when he sees his students achieving success, most notably when students come to tell him that they were accepted into their dream school. He continues to learn and grow, taking advantage of opportunities that will advance his career and make him a better counselor. Joined by his wife Karen tonight in support of him, with his two beautiful children at home, Charlotte and William, we congratulate Mr. Timothy Clancy this evening on earning of tenure as a school counselor here at Baldwin High School. Congratulations. Next, I'd like to call up Ms. Kelsey Krasner. I first knew Kelsey not from Baldwin, but from the year she spent as a leave replacement at Calhoun High School, where I was an assistant principal at the time. And I remember the disappointment I felt that we didn't have a spot for her there because she did extremely well. I also remember her being in my office and telling me she just got appointed to her current position here at Baldwin High School. And at the time, I had no thought in my mind that I would soon join her here. And I am so glad that our paths crossed once again. Ms. Krasner is most inspired when she witnesses her students work hard and succeed despite the challenges of remote and hybrid learning. Every time her students demonstrated intrinsic motivation and put in effort for the sake of learning, she felt proud and grateful to be their teacher. She loves watching her students grow throughout the school year and loves the moment when the students return from taking that AP World History exam feeling accomplished and confident in their efforts. She has helped her content teams in designing project-based learning opportunities, engaging lesson plans, and has even co-wrote the curriculum for the department's new college civics and news literacy course. And outside of class, she is the advisor of book club, Students Against Destructive Decisions, and co-adviser to Medical Margols, first place. Yeah. Hoping to continue to learn and develop as an educator and become closer to the Baldwin community, Ms. Krasner looks forward to many years of collaboration with her colleagues who inspire her every day and push her to be a better educator. Joined by her mom and dad, Judy and Tom Krasner, in support of her, we congratulate Ms. Kelsey Krasner this evening on earning tenure as a social studies teacher here at Baldwin High School. Congratulations. I now like to call up Ms. Stephanie Pina. When you look for an individual to fill a school counselor position, you want to find someone that is diligent, compassionate, organized, caring, and involved. Ms. Pina is all of that and more. Just a few days before graduating with her master's degree in school counseling at LIU, Ms. Pina was hired here as a school counselor at Baldwin High School. She remembers feeling both nervous and excited to start her career. She knew that she would love working here when all new staff were asked to make a 90s theme song introduction video for the whole district and staff to see and welcome them. I'd like to see that. The unexpected and hilarious moments with her students and colleagues are the things she will never forget and is inspired by the resilience shown from her students pushing through a once-in-a-lifetime pandemic and coming out stronger than before. Each year, she loves watching or hearing that students were accepted into their dream college, as well as watching first-generation students cross that stage at graduation with a huge smile on their face and hearing the cheers from their families. Ms. Pina plans to continue to pursue different educational opportunities that will expand her knowledge as a school counselor, hoping that her students continue to feel loved, supported, and inspired. Joined tonight here by her parents, grandmother, godmother, brothers, sister-in-law, and nieces and nephews, who are watching from home in support of her, we congratulate Ms. Stephanie Pina this evening earning tenure as a school counselor here at Baldwin High School. I'd like to now invite Ms. Christina Riley to the podium. After working in private industry as an interior designer for 17 years and then a teaching assistant for four more years, Mrs. Riley joined us here at Baldwin High School and Baldwin Middle School teaching a variety of family consumer science courses. You can tell, and I know firsthand from observing her class, that her years of experience and joy for fashion and cooking permeate her lessons and in turn engage her students. And if you love a little sausage and peppers, she can help you with that too, as her and her husband own a food truck selling delicious sausage and pepper sandwiches. Let us know. And it's right outside, yes. I'm getting a little hungry, actually. I didn't eat dinner. She always enjoys when she shows samples of finished products to her interior design students at the beginning of the course. And some will say, "There's no way I'll be able to do this." Then, at the end of the course, hearing those same students say, "I can't believe I did this. I am so proud." That's what teaching is all about. She hopes that in the future, her students will come back one day after they graduate and describe how the courses she taught them inspired them and made them into the people they are today. Joined by her husband Billy and her sons Will and Jack in support of her, we congratulate Mrs. Christina Riley this evening earning tenure as a family consumer science teacher here at Baldwin High School and Middle School. Congratulations. Next, I'd like to call up Mr. Jared Saltzman. So there was a period of time where Mr. Saltzman and I would always run into each other outside of the building. For example, in Chipotle, supporting the school fundraising event or at various sporting events because he promised his students he would attend. And he's not one to break his promises. Mr. Saltzman is a favorite among his students, not only because he takes the time to do things like this, but also because he's an exceptional physics teacher. Mr. Saltzman is inspired by his teacher colleagues because they have shown him that he can take risks with new teaching methods, and it gives him the confidence to enter the classroom to be the best teacher that he can be. He knew he loved being an educator when a student in his AP class told him upon his graduation that he was now going to study engineering because of the class he took with Mr. Saltzman. It doesn't take much to create a connection with students, and those connections are what he loves about teaching. He hopes to continue to inspire students to find their passion. And when he is not teaching, he'll be traveling and looking for new recipes to try out in his slow cooker, which is right outside, no. Mr. Saltzman, I look forward to many years to come of running into you at the next Chipotle fundraiser, getting our dinner. He's joined by his parents and girlfriend in support of him. We congratulate Mr. Jared Saltzman on earning tenure as a science teacher here at Baldwin High School. Congratulations. Next, I'd like to invite Mrs. Kelly Pateroni. So I challenge everyone here tonight to find anyone who loves Italian more than Mrs. Pateroni. If you don't believe me, this will prove it. She made a song lyric to the tune of "Party in the USA" by Miley Cyrus to help her students remember irregular verbs. And they prefer her version to Miley Cyrus's. I didn't practice that much. There you go. She comes to Baldwin High School ready to work hard every day, so much so that even one time, she startled me as I sat at my desk knocking on my outside window around 6:00 a.m. so she can get into the building. So now she just texts me, so it's all good. She is so inspired by her students' Seal of Bi Literacy presentations this year, it almost brought her to tears because they did all better than their best. She hopes that the coming years will be filled with a greater sense of peace and normalcy for students and staff alike. Joined by her husband Andrea in support of her, we congratulate Ms. Kelly Pateroni this evening earning tenure as a world language teacher here at Baldwin High School. Congratulations. Next, I'd like to invite Mr. Noah Kaplan to the podium. It's more than likely that every student at Baldwin High School knows Mr. Noah Kaplan in some way, shape, or form. As a teaching assistant in both social studies, English, and science classes, he has supported so many students over the years. And not just in these classes, but during our recycling program, T.O.S. Club, or softball. Mr. Kaplan even is finding himself having to explain to kids all the time, "Sorry, I can't be in all your classes all the time," when they ask if he could. That's a sign of a great teaching assistant. There is just not enough of Mr. Kaplan to go around. He is inspired to watch the bonds created in collaboration between his students and loves watching them progress towards graduation. He is an avid reader who is constantly searching for new things to learn about in order to better himself and his students. And that is certainly evident in the classroom. He hopes to continue working with young people towards their futures and to ensure they put themselves in a position to make their dreams come true. We congratulate Mr. Noah Kaplan this evening on earning tenure as a teaching assistant here at Baldwin High School. Congratulations very much.
I'd like to now invite Eric Rothbard and Andrew DiNapoli to the podium, please.
Good evening, everyone. Yeah, I'm just gonna get this set. All right. So I have to preface this evening for both Mr. Rothbard and Ms. Sheldon with this. As an English major, it was quite difficult to really put in words the impact that both of these educators that I have such a privilege presenting tonight have on our students every day. And I'm truly honored to be able to speak about- period throughout the year, going to the halls, going up to the second floor, where are you headed, where are you going? I have Mr. Rothbard for coaching, I have Mr. Rothbard for pre-academy, I have Mr. Rothbard for extra help, I have Mr. Rothbard because I just have to check in. So I have to say, it's just an absolute pleasure to see Mr. Rothbard and all the hats that he wears for our kids on a daily basis. Mr. Rothbard is an eighth grade earth science teacher who has, fun fact, traveled the world when he doesn't teach. He actually has been to 47 countries on six continents and will hit 50 countries a summer. Now, the reason why I bring this up is it's these experiences that Mr. Rothbard brings into his classroom when teaching science and earth science that even brings that learning and that engagement to more real-world experiences and discussions among the students in his class. In his initial years at Baldwin School District, it's the things that his students come up with that Mr. Rothbard helps them create that brings him joy and laughter. Whether it's students creating a superhero with weathering and erosion powers, making headlines about geologic history, or children's stories about a water droplet in the water cycle, they always come up with great content that brings life to learning. They are the eighth grade science teachers who support, guide, and teach him on a daily basis that inspire him as, quote, "I am lucky to work with such talented and caring educators." It is whenever someone asks him, Eric, what is it like teaching 13 and 14-year-olds on a daily basis? And his answer of, it's never boring. I never know what they will say or do next, and that's what makes each day different than the next. They are just so awkward navigating through their own identity, and that's what makes Mr. Rothbard continue to love being an educator, especially at the middle school. Mr. Rothbard's hopes and dreams include teaching at Baldwin for many years and how amazing it would be to see some of his students become his colleagues in education. Mr. Rothbard sees how so many of his students have the ability to teach, help, and guide others. Mr. Rothbard would love to see an old student or two or more grow into another fantastic Baldwin educator. Also, Mr. Rothbard hopes to travel to Antarctica to fulfill his dream of traveling to all seven continents and get to 100 countries in his lifetime. On behalf of Baldwin Middle School, we are honored to join Mr. Rothbard and his parents watching live from Florida in celebrating the tenure recognition of an educator whose kind, selfless, and intellectual characteristics always put students in the best position to succeed. Congratulations, Mr. Rothbard. Ms. Sheldon, do you want to come up now? Sheldon. Ms. Sheldon is also an example of the deep meaning of the term educator and who places their students at the center of everything day in and day out. If your student is ever in need of crisis, Ms. Sheldon is there in a moment's notice. Ms. Sheldon was born in Uruguay and came to the U.S. at the age of seven. As an ENL learner, she had to learn the language and culture like many of our learners. This set the foundation for her journey to becoming a guidance counselor, a counselor who continues to establish strong relationships with learners both on and off of her caseload to ensure their success. In her initial years at Baldwin School District, it is the camaraderie amongst the team that she works with that continues to bring her joy and laughter each day. It has been the district and community's commitment to helping students and families through the pandemic that has greatly inspired her. It is watching learners' growth and being able to help them during difficult times that truly makes her love what it means to be an educator. Ms. Sheldon's hopes and dreams center on her continuation to strengthen the ongoing connections with her students and their families, and to continue learning and expanding her own learning and education as a means to always be in the position to best support all children in the middle school. On behalf of Baldwin Middle School, it truly is a privilege to join Ms. Sheldon, her husband Tommy, and her son Evan in congratulating her on her tenure recognition, whose altruistic nature and deep commitment to growing people is always evident in the way she builds her students up from middle school, high school, and beyond. Congratulations, Ms. Sheldon.
I would now like to invite Adongo Longjohn and Sharice Young to join us at the podium.
Bring that down a little. This evening, I get the honor of presenting and congratulating three amazing special education teachers. Some people see the disability in a student, but I have to say that special education teachers, they all see the possibilities and what our students can achieve. So I want to thank all three of them. So we'll begin with Adongo Longjohn, best known as LJ. He came to us during the 1819 school year and prior to coming to Baldwin. He was a teaching assistant in the Longwood Senior High School District. In addition to his responsibilities as a teacher, he is also a proud member of the mentoring program here at the high school. He is also an assistant football and basketball coach. This year, he was named conference junior varsity coach of the year. Well deserved. He has shared with me that one thing that made him laugh, and this goes back to his first year. Adongo received a lovely email with capital letters that said, "I've been mugged." So your first-year teacher, you're wondering, what does this email mean? And he opened up the email only to find that it wasn't exactly what he expected, but it was far beyond his expectations. He found out that the contents of the email were gifts, gestures, kind gestures of gifts within a coffee mug filled with sweets and holiday spirit. He further shared that these highlights, one of the strengths of the community here in Baldwin, that he really appreciates, and that is the ability to exceed expectations. Mr. Longjohn works closely with building administrators, central office staff. He displays continuous growth throughout his years here in Baldwin. I've had the pleasure to see a few of his lessons, and what is rewarding for me is to hear students remember something from prior years and say, remember when, yes, I remember when you taught us that. That is rewarding. That means that what he is teaching them is embedded within their lifelong learning. He has made escape room activities, emoji classrooms, I have to say during the shutdown, turned his home into like a semi-classroom that you could see. I have to say that his students speak highly of him. They appreciate his honesty, they appreciate his advice, and they congratulated him on his award this year. He consistently emphasizes the importance of math in your real life, and for many students, math is maybe not such a fun activity, a fun lesson or a fun class, but I have to say, many of his students enjoy the lessons, they're engaged in his lessons, he is supportive, he's flexible, he demonstrates commitment to his students, the parents, his classroom environment has been a consistent strength over the years, he has positive routines. The students have to put their lovely phones in the lovely pocket, and they get to charge their phones in class, so it's no longer a distraction, but he has a nice little space for it, and the students actually follow through on that. He has built a strong rapport with his students, his relationships encourage, he's encouraging his students to take academic risks, and it makes it a more comfortable learning environment for them to make mistakes and to learn from their mistakes. He has shared that many educators would agree that seeing your students' growth and watching them succeed is extremely gratifying. The moments when former students reach out to let you know how they're doing, the moments when current students tell you how much they enjoy your class, and the moments when students simply thank you for everything that you've done, these are the gratifying moments that inspire him as an educator. Knowing that he is making a difference in another person's life is what has made him love the field of education. He is joined here tonight by his wife, his parents, his sisters, and I'd like to congratulate him on receiving tenure as a special education secondary mathematics teacher. Next, we have Jennifer Abramowski. Dynamic, yes, very dynamic, and she's amazing with technology. She's taught us a lot over the years. Jennifer came to us from Jean Nuzzi Intermediate School in Queens Village. She has worked within our co-teaching settings within the social studies department, and more recently this year, she has been a member of the residency program. Jennifer has known that she's wanted to become a teacher since high school. Her goal was to have a positive impact on the future lives of her students. Throughout college, her five years of teaching in the city, and in her three years here in Baldwin, she has never stopped in her pursuit of becoming a better teacher for her students. Now a digital innovator with PBS, WNET, a resident in our district's education program that is working towards pushing forward the vision of education in 2035, and as of tonight, a soon-to-be twice-tenured teacher, pursuing her leadership certifications, she has never stopped pursuing her love for making a difference in her students' lives. Ms. Abramowski has changed throughout her career. She has gotten better, she's made mistakes, she's learned, she's grown, but from the nervous first-year teacher to an accomplished educator, the one thing that has not changed is that what makes her most proud are her students. And if you ever have a conversation with Denver, she only talks about her students. She really talks about herself. Ms. Abramowski shares that her colleagues have brought joy to her life every day, they have helped turn a frown into a smile and then a laugh, even when times are tough. She's inspired by her colleagues, and she describes her colleagues as resilient, kind, and always putting students first. Her love for education comes from her students. From her time as a leave replacement to now, the kids have always been what drives her passion for education. Seeing her students in the hallways after she's had them for a year, hearing how her students are doing, hearing their excitement when they tell her about what's new in their lives, and getting to see their expressions when she tells them what they can do in their future lives and that they can do and be anything, this is what drives her as an educator, and this is why she loves the field of education. Her hope is that in the future, she continues to make a difference in every student's life. Jennifer is joined tonight by many family members. Is your fiancee here? Fiancee? Hi. We've got mom, dad, mother-in-law, father-in-law, we've got, I think, sister, the niece, nephews, nephews, we have the whole family. Congratulations, Jennifer. It's a pleasure, a pleasure to award you tenure. Antoinette came to Baldwin after teaching for nine years at Channelview School for Research in Rockaway. She's taught a variety of math topics, algebra, algebra II, geometry, AP statistics, you name it, she's done it. Antoinette has worked within our integrated co-teach settings here at Baldwin High School as well as at Baldwin Middle School. Ms. Malella has shared that being a teacher gives her great joy every day. She's inspired most by her students and colleagues. Most recently, in the midst of the pandemic and hybrid remote learning, Ms. Malella was inspired by the way in which the Baldwin middle and high school communities came together, even stepping outside of our comfort zone to navigate this new learning environment as a family. Ms. Malella further shares that seeing the Baldwin middle school and high school students thrive and witnessing their collaboration while they do group work has deepened her love for being an educator. She realizes that not only is she teaching math, but she is also providing her students with skills that they can use in all aspects of their lives. Mrs. Malella's future begins with her continued contribution to the educational system and the community of learners she works with. It is her hope that every child knows their worth and reaches their full potential, and that she has a positive influence and is a source of knowledge for her students. Her personal goals include continuing to nurture her family life and furthering her education. And just so you know, she loves to bake, and she likes hot yuca, probably need to go for a class or two with her. She is joined here tonight by her husband Scott, her two sons Christopher and Rocco, and I think her parents and brother-in-law, they're all watching remotely. So congratulations, Antoinette Malella, on receiving tenure.
Can we please have Deanna Albro and Andre Propello come up?
It is an absolute pleasure to be here to discuss and talk to you a little bit about Deanna Albro. She is a remarkable teacher and an incredible human being. She is extraordinarily powerful when it comes to pedagogy, she's great with content, she has a deep understanding of all sorts of musical styles and how to present them at various grade levels, she's energetic, flexible, and most importantly for me, she's not a diva. In the arts, people who are very talented and capable often are a little difficult to manage. But Ms. Albro has very high standards, high expectations for herself and whatever she's involved in, and she at any time can be humble, take direction, and share a laugh, and this is what makes her so perfect for Baldwin. During the hiring process, we look very carefully at candidates, obviously, for the position that we're hiring them for, but also, I'm looking very carefully at their resumes and the skills that they present, because I'm looking not only for that position, but I'm looking for what they can do for the Baldwin students, K-12, generally speaking. I always frame the positions here as what we have is an arts lifestyle, it's not simply a job. And during that whole portion of the interview, Ms. Albro lit up and basically was like, this is what I'm looking for, I'm looking for a lifestyle, this is what I want to do. So it was very clear that she has lived up to that every single day of her probation. And I want to reiterate something that Mark Gray said earlier, there's the probationary period that we all know and understand that's existed for 60 years or so, and then there's pandemic probation. And it is not only nerve-wracking, which Uh, and it is not only nerve-wracking, which is normal, uh, but it is disconcerting and disquieting and lots of unknown moments that these new teachers here today lived up to. And, uh, I couldn't be prouder of many of the folks that I've seen here, but most importantly, Ms. Albro. Let me share a little bit about her. Um, she loves to play music with her fiance, Nicholas Di Benedetto. Harder to say than Albro. They'll be getting married this summer. She loves to travel and hike and has been to countries in Europe, Asia, South America, as well as many cities and national parks here in the U.S. When asked what she is, what inspires her, she said that "I feel inspired by my students every day, especially because I see such a wide range of students in different settings. I interact with every grade level from K-12 in some way, shape, or form, and they all inspire me with their accomplishments and musicality." "Most recently, I was so inspired by the cast of the students involved in the Baldwin Middle School Musical Review. We have not put on a musical at BMS since before the pandemic, but the energy, excitement, commitment, and love that these students demonstrated blew me away. We were rehearsing "Seasons of Love" from Rent one afternoon in the choir room, and I felt tears in my eyes looking around the room, tangibly feeling how much the students loved being there with one another as they sang together." As I said, she is part of the Baldwin lifestyle, Baldwin arts lifestyle. She assists us at the high school, at the middle school. She's involved with everything that goes on musically at Brookside. And I've always wanted, basically, gluing these schools together with the staff that we have, and she's been helping me along that way. So very happy about that. I'm going to share something about her hopes and dreams because it ties into tonight. "My dream when I started here in Baldwin was to cultivate a culture of creativity and success in my music classroom. My biggest hope for my future as a music educator is that when I'm ready to retire, I can look back at the program I've built and hopefully see a legacy of students who love and appreciate music, who feel comfortable and capable singing along to songs they love and dancing with their families at special occasions, and who believe in themselves enough to pick up an instrument and try it out, trusting in their own abilities to have fun and make music in any way they know how." She's already thinking about the legacy she wants to leave as a teacher. It's an amazing thing. She's joined tonight by her mother, Mary Ann Delamontica, and her best friend Blaine DeAngelis. I want to thank you guys for sharing such a wonderful educator with us.
So, speaking of divas, no, kidding. Um, I'd like to call Nicole Hunna. So Nicole came to us from, um, to, came to Baldwin as a K-12 Director of Instruction and soon realized how much she missed kids. Um, and when the opening for Steel School Principal came, you could not stop Nicole from applying for that job. Um, if you know Nicole, you know that, um, nobody could fit more words in a minute than she can. Um, when she gets five minutes to speak, she can easily pack 20 into those five minutes. What stands out most, um, about Mrs. Hun is that she is wildly passionate about whatever it is she chooses to do. Um, she is an expert when it comes to literacy. Um, she mastered the names of all of the kids in her school in a split second. Um, she cares deeply about all of the students in her school. She cares about her teachers. Um, she cares about what is happening because she recognizes very clearly um, that what she does every day affects the future of everybody who she touches every day and every day beyond that. And she takes that responsibility very seriously um, and, and acts in a way that allows for that, um, to make an impact on everyone around her. So, um, when asked what inspires her, um, she said, "Seeing the Baldwin and Steel community come together throughout the pandemic and literally seeing countless faces lined up on streets as the Steel School team drove through the town to wave and say hello to children and families." She hopes to continue to make a positive difference in the world, encouraging those along the journey to treat others the way they want to be treated. She is joined here tonight by her husband Jeff, um, and we wish, um, Mrs. Hun, um, the absolute best future. What you don't know is she just read the Constitution in my ear, and that's how quickly she was able to do it. So we are going to take a quick break. Um, but what I want to just, um, share, uh, first of all, it was alluded to about our teachers who received tenure. Just for those of you who don't know, um, the context of what was said. We tend to do things differently here in Baldwin. Um, and when we hire new staff and we introduce them to the faculty at opening day, um, what happens in most cases is everybody stands up, they are introduced, and by the time the 15th person goes, the teachers who are all back from, you know, eight weeks of vacation just really want to poke their eyes out and say, "Oh, my God, can we get on with this?" And so in Baldwin, instead, we, um, have new, different ways of introducing. And this cohort of, um, new faculty, um, did a version of Family Ties. Had I thought about this in advance, I would have had it set up, and I would have embarrassed them once more. But lucky for you, I did not. You might want to warn the people who are getting tenure next year. This is really spectacular. I want to congratulate all of our newly-tenured, um, teachers and, um, teaching assistants. I want to congratulate all of our retired teachers. I'm sure that after that, they're all going to approach Dr. Gallo and I and, um, want to revoke their retirement because they're so inspired by all the young people. Um, it is really an honor, um, to serve as superintendent here, um, for many, many reasons. Uh, but the main reason are our students and the adults in our community because they are what makes this Baldwin a Baldwin family. So, um, my best wishes to all of our retirees. Um, you are treasured Baldwin family, you always will be. And to our newly-tenured staff, I want to congratulate you and your families. They should be exceptionally proud of you. Um, you've worked very, very hard to get to this point today, and we are thrilled, um, that you are here. We are thrilled to continue to grow together, um, and we want to congratulate everybody. So congratulations, let's take a...
You did your comments, right?
Yeah, we know. Okay. We would now like to present our comments from the Board of Education and Liaison Reports. We'll start then at this end. Mrs. Dreska, do you have anything?
I do not have anything.
Okay. Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I was just telling Mrs. Healy what a nice night it was at the middle school last night to do the, to be there for the middle school awards. Although that building sorely needs air conditioning, but we'll talk about that later in the year, folks. Just a really great job was done by Ms. McKenzie and Mr. Janapoli and the whole staff. It was really nice, nice to be there. And, that's not my notes, this is my notes. Oh, and I got to be there on the beautiful sunny day a couple of weeks ago for the unveiling of the Steel Hello Neighbor, oh, that's your school too, right? The Hello Neighbor program. And get yourselves down there to see the photos up on the fence and my other buddies were there too. That was such a, such a nice little event they had there. This morning, this afternoon, Mary Jo and I were at the Baldwin Chamber luncheon. Little plug for, what is it called? Basil Leaf Cafe, it's very good. And that's where we had our meeting. Judy Griffin came, Assemblywoman Judy Griffin, and it's nice to have the access to our elected officials. And she's optimistic that this 45-day waiting period is over this Friday and maybe we'll see some announcements about the projects going forward in the DRI. Is that what it is? Yeah. So that's my report.
Thank you. As far as what I have, I would just like to say it was a great honor to be able to attend the In Recognition of Excellence Dinner. That is such an amazing event. It's so nice to be able to see our students recognize the people that have had such an impact on their life, their educators. And it's a great event, as well as the Senior Awards, an amazing night, all of our amazing young people. So that was, that was an honor to be able to do both of those events. And that's all I have. Mrs. Reed?
So, Ms. Dreska, you forgot, we did double duty at the Spring Orchestra Concert, where we were there as parents and board members. Yep. Yeah, you forgot that, right? I just was like, what did I do? I'm like, oh, that's right. So it was a great concert. It was nice to be back and see these things in person inside the building. The kids were great. I kind of liked the fact that they had two sections where we could do the, my daughter's in the Symphony Orchestra, so I was able to do that. It's been a long, because I tell you guys all the time, I'm working these crazy hours, so to be able to do that and get back home and get some sleep before I had to go to work was kind of nice and not have to be there for Symphony and Chamber Orchestra. So I like the kind of the breakup. And as Mr. Cool shared, I was also at the In Recognition of Excellence Dinner. And again, it is always like the most, it's one of the most fabulous events that we do every year, when the students, just as a former teacher, I'm not going to cry, but as a former teacher, sometimes when you're teaching, you don't know how you're impacting kids. And so to have your flowers, basically, that is just such a great event and such, so nice to hear how you may have impacted students' lives positively so that they can move on and do better, bigger and better things. So that's all I have to report.
I did some of the same things as other members of the Board. I was at the Senior Awards, which was really terrific. And I think everybody would agree, every, being back in person is just a joy. And you could feel it in the room at the activities, that the students were so glad to be back, we had parents back, it was really nice. Along with my colleagues, I marched the Memorial Day Parade. And once again, everyone was so glad to be back. People were on the sidelines, they were coming up to us, they were enthusiastic, everybody was just so happy to be back where it felt normal, at least. And the only other thing I would add is, this morning, I had a meeting of the Long Island Education Coalition. And I've mentioned that before, I co-chair along with NICEIT, and it also includes a representative Nassau Region PTA. So it's very good conversation around the table. And one of the things that was mentioned is that on Long Island, something like 40% of school superintendents have three years or less experience on the job. And I say that only to say, we are very fortunate that we have had consistency, consistency in our leadership and consistency on the Board. This has been a very trying couple of years, and everybody, you know, has acknowledged that this evening, but we are fortunate. We have consistency in our leadership and the consistency on the Board. And it helps, it makes a difference. Thank you, that's it.
Okay, we are now up to the question and comment period. If anybody has a question or comment, please be sure and fill out a card in the back of the room. As of now, we just have one. So, Mrs. Healy, would you just stand and, you can stand right there, you don't have to come up, and just give your name and address, please.
Marie Gillett. To the very best of their ability. I have tremendous appreciation, that's okay, for the teachers, staff, and coaches of the Baldwin Middle School. I was warned that the middle school years are tumultuous, and our experience was the extreme opposite. I'm so grateful for all who have played a role in helping my son to become the young man that he is today. I am so grateful, even though he's a Green Bay Packers fan. Say again, even though he's a Green Bay Packers fan. I'm so pleased yet again that the Baldwin community has shown that they are in support of our schools. Some of you who know me know that I was really out there trying to encourage people.
Thank you.
Explaining to them the reasons that we needed, what we needed, that we have to move forward in, you know, even if it's in pieces. It's so important, not only for our school, but for our whole community, our entire community. And it is my hope that in the show of this ongoing support, that it will be met with some
Thank you very much, Mrs. Healy. And thank you for your comments. We will certainly take all of it under advisement. And we, please know that we always appreciate your support. We do know that you are always out there supporting us and doing whatever you can to help the children and our district, and we really appreciate that. So thank you. Okay, if that's all we have for questions and comments, we'll get on with the business. The Board of Education approves the recommendations for services of the Committee on Special Education, Sub-CE 504 Committee, and Committee on Preschool Special Education for services in January, February, March, April, and May 2022, as detailed in the Friday mailing. So moved. Moved by Mrs. Reed?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The Board of Education approves the Home Tutoring and Special Education Service Reports, as detailed in the Friday mailing. So moved. Moved by Mrs. Reed?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mrs. Dreska. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The Board of Education accepts with thanks a donation of a bench by the class of 2022 to be placed in the courtyard area of the Baldwin High School. The bench will be yellow and read "Class of 2022" and will be purchased with funds from fundraisers throughout the school year, as detailed in the Friday mailing. So moved. Moved by Mrs. O'Hagan?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. As Board President, I'm calling for consideration of a consent agenda for Business Items 2 through 30. Are there any items that members would care to withdraw from consideration under the Consent Agenda for further discussion and a separate vote? Okay. So do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda, including Business Items 2 through 30? So moved. Moved by Mrs. Reed?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve Business Items 2 through 30? So moved. Moved by Mrs. O'Hagan?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mrs. Reed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Now skipping ahead.
I have a question, but I still have to end off on this.
You sure?
Yeah. Actually, I just want to ask that.
Go ahead.
Number five, how does that work officially? How do I ask for that when you disapprove of consent? Are you okay with that? I can do that? Okay. Number five, is that increase applied to the student, to the parent, or, I can't recall? So it says 4.6 plus the 40 cents. Is that?
Yes, from a transactional standpoint.
It's per transaction?
It will affect it then.
It's on, okay. And what was it before? Is it the per tran, the 40 cents per transaction is the addition, or is the increase in the percentage and the?
It's an increase in the percentage and then the transaction.
There wasn't a transaction before, correct? Okay, that's why I need clarification on, thank you.
The Board of Education approves the Updated Use of Facilities Report from July 2021 through June 2022, as detailed in the Friday mailing. So moved. Moved by Mrs. O'Hagan?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mrs. Reed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Board of Education approves the Recommendations for Membership on the CPSE/CE Committees for the 2022-23 School Year, as detailed in the Friday mailing. So moved. Moved by Mrs. Reed?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Smith. All those in favor?
Other.
Aye. Okay. Does anyone have anything under other? No? Okay. So I'm just going to point out a couple important dates, and of course, there's too many for me to mention. It's all always on the website. So with all the PTA events coming up and all of the concerts, you know, so many activities, please consult the website for the dates and times. The Varsity Banquet will be here tomorrow night at 7:00. As well as tomorrow night at 7:30 here in the high school is the Baldwin Civic Association Meeting. And given everything that's going on with the downtown revitalization project, I certainly encourage everybody to attend. They should have some updates. On June 13th, Concerned Parents of Baldwin will meet here at the high school at 7:00. On the 14th, the Sports Awards will be at the middle school at 7:00 PM. And then, of course, we get into all the moving up ceremonies. So again, please consult the website for all of that information. And the next?
July 1st.
Yes. The next board meeting will be?
Not on one, during that.
July 1st, and that is going to be a daytime meeting.
9:00 AM, right?
9:00 AM. Okay. So if there is nothing else, can I get a motion to close the meeting? So moved. Moved by Mrs. Reed?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mrs. Dreska. All those in favor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you so much, everybody.